We're moving on and thank you Attorney Macy for laying out where we're going from here. At this point in time, the public hearing following Town Board Special Meeting Number One is called to order and we are called to order on this at 8:28 PM on November 5th, 2019. Review of the proposed budget, again, there were copies of that in the newspaper on the town's websites and paper, copies here. There are also detailed backup sheets. I mean, do you want to speak to that or you want me to? I guess I'll summarize that while she's here, but if you look at it, there are actually three budgets. There's an operating budget, a fire inspection budget, any capital budget. I don't know unless we're gonna do a presentation, are there any, well, I guess the review of that, the document speaks for itself, but if you look at, I'm gonna just put it into the record here, if you look at the 2020 proposed budget for operating for total revenues and expenditures is $2,653,901. The fire inspection budget, again, the budget on that, the proposed budget is for revenues of $113,335, which includes, as I understand, some of the existing fund balance and total expenditure proposed at $44,619. And the capital budget is proposed at $927,800 of both revenues and expenditures, and again, there's detail provided on that. Kathy, you want to say anything more to that?
No, I don't. He summarized well.
All right, so then we'll go to item three. I'll simply read this, but Chairman, review Town Order Section 2-57, Procedure in Public Hearings. Following procedure shall be used in public hearings conducted by the Town Board, such as this chairperson will read the notice. The chairperson shall then call on those persons who wish to speak for the proposition. Each person wishing to speak for the proposition shall give his or her name and address. Each person speaking on behalf of the proposition shall be limited for a reasonable time as set by the Board. The chairperson then shall then call on those persons who wish to oppose the proposition. Each such person wishing to speak in opposition to the proposition shall give his or her name and address and shall also be limited if any person wishing to speak in rebuttal. Twenty statements made with the permission of the chairperson do so, provided however such rebuttal statement shall be limited to three minutes by any one individual. And when the chairperson is in his or her discretion is satisfied that the proposition has been heard, he slash she shall announce the fact that the hearing is concluded. So item four is electors to speak in favor of a budget. I mean, this is pretty well scripted. It's supposed to be those speaking in favor, those speaking opposed, and those who choose to make rebuttal statements will loosen that a little bit and I presume we may go back and forth, but at least we'll start with anybody who would like to speak in favor of the budget. Do you want to comment?
Well, only that in this case, as we, as I believe Mr. Dorr and others have said, we do answer questions during this public, during a public hearing, but we don't go back and forth with a resident. What we normally do is let the resident stand up if they have questions. We write down all the questions. When they sit down, then we answer those questions and then we get the next person. Otherwise, we could go back and forth for an hour with just one person. So we've always followed this procedure and I hope people will be willing to let us follow this procedure this time also. But I, you can make any comments, questions on the budget, and then when the budget hearing is closed, then we'll move to the special Town Electoral Meeting and the votes.
One other quick thing, Administrator Nicholas just informed me, the fire chief said we're a bit over capacity. Some of you who came in late, we're gonna ask you if you would kindly go down to the fire station, to the overflow area, for late arrivals, please. Okay, who would like to speak in public hearing? Please come forward.
As Walker, W262, South 3186 Ridge Road, I would like to confirm the property tax levy that is set, that does include the cost of the land plus $40,000 in additional testing, correct?
I know. I understand. I'm sorry, say that again, or say the second part first?
The second part, we, there's like $347,800, I do believe, for the purchase of the land.
I believe.
And $40,000 for, I don't know, testing, development, maybe sketching, I don't know, for the land. So that's $387,800. That is included in the proposed tax levy, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, it is, but actually, it's balanced against it. There are actually funds in the capital fund in excess of $2 billion in terms of the capital fund part of it. If we were to, correct me on this, but if we were to remove that from the budget, I believe the Town Board would still consider the levy of $370,000 and somewhat dollars for...
$370,000.
As elected, though, we may remove that from the tax levy, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I believe.
Let's make sure we get the whole story, though. You've got some great questions and I don't want to give anybody misinformation. How much money is being proposed in this budget be removed from contingency in order to balance the budget? You need to know this number also because if you don't, you keep your contingency where your contingency is at. You understand what I mean?
Yeah, you're talking about keeping extra money in the reserve fund while levying the full amount for the land.
If, well, levying the full amount, it's if you vote no on the land at the meeting and not buying the land.
Correct, but the money is still in the levy.
But the money would be either put into reserves or other money wouldn't be taken out of reserves. Just so you know.
It's still the same thing. You have a budget in to spend regardless of whether it's coming from money we paid previously or money we will pay on this year's tax bill.
But I guess I'll answer your question this way. If, if it goes that way, that the land purchase is not approved, okay, the capital funds and that money would not be spent, would not be taken, or basically it would go back into a reserve, if you will, could be reallocated for other capital needs and other capital projects.
Correct, that's exactly what I'm saying. You're going to keep the money, you're gonna levy it and keep the money.
For other capital needs.
No, no, you develop the budget without that. So I'm sorry. I, you know, I will be trying to make the motion to reduce that levy by that amount.
I don't know if anyone, Sandy Ham, West 230, South 3827 Milky Way Road. I'm used to speaking to an empty room.
I think people, even as Closter has a misconception on how this works, what happens is, is there's going to be a motion made to set the levy by someone in this room, maybe me, maybe her, but monies don't get subtracted. You make a motion for what you want the levy to be, and it can be lower than the 1.3, it can be greater than, maybe a little bit than the 1.675, but I'm looking at this page of the summary and the general fund that they want to levy, that they're asking to levy for us to accept is $1,304,576 for operating expenses. I propose that be the amount that gets levied. Thank you.
It doesn't even show that number on the sheet.
Sure it does.
1,300,000.
Right there.
Okay, thank you.
It's just the general fund.
Well, look here.
Lori Longtime, MHM71, S3581, oh, no, Dorr. This, my comment is not so much the budget. I should have probably said this before, but regarding communication, I agree with the chairman's assessment that it could have been better, but for people that, that read their information online, the notice of this meeting and the agenda that was posted online is unreadable. It is, I don't know what the technical problem is, but it is a problem that has occurred before and it is so small, you cannot read it even online by trying to enlarge the document or trying to enlarge the window. It doesn't work. So that would be a very small, I would assume, an easy technical fix that we should pursue and put into place so that people who do want to find out information, maybe not during regular business hours, but later or earlier can simply go online and read it. If it's on there, we should be able to read it. And I understand that this is a problem that's occurred before and people were having trouble reading things on their phone. So let's fix it and communicate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, can I have your slip, please?
Who else would like to speak?
It's the same zip as everybody's.
I'm sorry, your slip, ma'am.
Okay, who would like to speak?
I'm sorry, I was downstairs in the overflow area, so I need some clarification on what we said before.
Sure.
So the proposed tax levy, can you please clarify, does it or does it not include the estimated funds to purchase these two plots of land?
Let's answer the question this way. If you look at the sheet here, okay, the proposed tax levy for 2020, okay, is for the general fund is $1,304,576, okay? The proposed tax levy for the capital fund is $370,866. If the decision tonight is not to approve those properties, the money will obviously not be spent to purchase them, but the money that's being levied to go into the capital fund will go for other capital reserves or capital needs such as roads, such as whatever the Board and the electorate choose to do, such as building a salt shed, a public works, building new equipment, ambulances or whatever, it will go there. What, let me just finish quickly. What, if you look at what is proposed to be done, the property tax levy, and maybe we've got to look at the number on that, but the proposed budget of the proposed property tax levy is not significantly different than it was last year. I mean, at that rate, last year's mill rate even was a dollar and eighty-two cents for a thousand. That means each town resident, if you had a $200,000 property, you're paying a little over $360 for property taxes. If it's 300,000, it's a little over, like, $540 for a $300,000 house. The proposed total tax levy, and maybe you can give us exact numbers on that, is not significantly different this year than it was from last year. So if the electorate does not approve the levy for the capital fund, basically the town is gonna be deprived of funds to do roads and road repairs, buy equipment and that type of thing. That's the bottom line.
With all due respect, Chairman, it sounds like you're playing a little blastin' loose with the numbers and it sounds inappropriate, and based upon that, I will stand against adding this to the levy.
Do you want to go through the numbers, please?
So, I'm not sure what numbers you want me to go through. Our assessed value for 2019 is $9,915,416,0700 with the tax levy that the Board is requesting, or what the state allows is $1,675,442. Our mill rate changes in 2019, tax levy, or 2,000 taxes from a dollar eighty-two to a dollar eighty-three with the, with the current rate at $1,675,442. So what the, what the chairman was stating was that we have a couple different funds. We have the general fund, which is our regular operating fund, and then we also have a capital fund. And in our capital fund, we had projects that the Board had voted on. One was the property, others were, we had $200,000 in there for road paving for next year. With the, in the capital fund, there is a, an amount of tax levy that we actually put in to the capital fund of $370,856. And the rest of the money that is needed, we're using out of fund balance from the, from the capital fund balance, and that capital fund balance, the chairman was saying, is about $2,000, $2 million. That is for capital projects in the future, fired, you know, fire trucks and such, as well as buildings, future building items. I don't know if that clarifies it all, but if you remove...
Where does it show all that on that budget sheet?
The tax, the tax levy that the Board, that the electorate can vote on today, you would vote the tax levy you want the Board to work with in the budget. The Board is asking that, for the amount that the state allows, which is the $1,675,442. If the town residents decide they want to change that, they can't go up because tax levy limits are in place, but if you wanted to change that, that would be the motion. You would say, I want to move that the tax levy, to approve a tax levy of whatever you want, $1,000, blah, blah, blah.
What's maximum, Kathy?
A 1.675,442.
I mean, I also would refer you, sir, if you have the minutes, sorry, if you have the minutes, you're gonna find that last year's levy was $1,656,244. So we're talking the difference between 1.656 and 1.675. We are not talking a difference of $300,000. I just want to make sure you know that, because if we lose that money, you can't get it back to pay for roads or anything else. There's no way to recoup all of that money.
Attorney Macy, thank you for clarifying that, because that underscores the point that I think everybody's charged up about, is there's a proposal to purchase these plots of land with no way to be able to pay for it, because you've already set what the expected levy is, right? So where was that money gonna come from?
Part of it, part of, $370,000, $370,866 would come from tax levy. The rest would come from fund balance.
That was my point, that I just wanted, you, you're gonna vote on anything you want to vote, but you have to understand, it would be leaving the money in the fund balance instead of taking it out. The actual amount of the levy is like, increase is like $19,000. It's not the $300,000. And if you take that money away, which you have every right to say, don't, that would mean less money that they won't buy the land if you say no, but they could spend on roads or fire department or police or any of the other services that they maybe chipped away at in order to balance this budget. I wasn't here, I wasn't part of that process.
Right.
Our job is to make sure you understand, that was the complaint. You didn't understand what was going on, and I just wanted to make sure we gave you enough information.
The tax, the tax levy for, and I don't have the exact numbers here, the last five years at least has been right around $1.6 million, $1.65 million. The town, with being fiscally prudent and fiscally responsible for quite a number of years in a row, has been able to run a budget surplus in the operating budget. And I think town residents, Town Board members, town staff need to be complimented a bit on that. So what has happened is we have from time to time moved some of that operating budget surplus into a capital fund. We were advised appropriately three, four years ago by, I think Attorney Macy, by the auditor, other people, you can't squirrel away money without a use or purpose for it, okay? But the big, I'll just finish off a quick bit, I mean, the big picture part of it, I mean, let's celebrate here for a minute, the town of Waukesha is basically debt-free, and that is a thing that which I think we owe many people who have let this town in years past. I don't want to dump on a neighbor, but I mean, the village of Big Bend is $5.1 million in debt.
Right.
The town of Waukesha, I'm trying to just finish a quick bit, but the town of Waukesha, if you look at, he has estimated, here I think, of an estimated fund balance in the capital fund toward the end of the year here, and I think I saw that number, can you help me, Kathy, but approximately...
Two million.
Two million dollars, and an estimate in the general fund of approximately $900,000. And the only debt that we have is approximately a $10,000 interest-free loan to Waukesha County. Everybody in the room should applaud that fact, because we're basically working with cash. But the place we're at, if you look at the list in the capital budget, leave aside the land purchase type of thing, or assume for a minute that goes away, but you look at the requests that we have for plow trucks, for backhoes, for roads, Town of Genesee is looking to borrow $3 million for road improvements. That's a debt they're gonna have to pay. We're working off of cash, but if you backed it, if you try to back it off to the $1.2 million, then it's, it's going to basically, basically tie up the ability to buy equipment to replace ambulances.
Chairman, I get it, Chairman. All right, I get it. I think everyone in the room gets it. We get it. I get it. I understand your point.
I didn't mean to pound on you, but we get an obligation here that people understand what they're voting on, so they don't walk out of here and say, oh my gosh, what did we do? I mean, if tonight's message is about disseminating information and educating people, we'd really be remiss if we walked out of here tonight without doing that.
I understand that, and that I would urge the Board to not break your arm patting yourself on the back too much, because there's plenty of warts out there, too.
Sure.
But, that said, in light of the fact that the plot of land purchases is not going to impact levy, I'm okay with where we're at.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
So, just so, I, really quickly, historical, in 2013, your tax levy rate was $1,648. In '14, the Board cut your tax levy to $1,585. In '15, we kept, the Board kept it at $1,585 with no increase. In '16 was up to $1,605, and in '17, $1,645, which is still under what it was in 2013. In 2018, the Board approved a, or the Town Electorate approved a levy of $1,656. The Board currently is asking for $1,675 for 2020.
And just one other quick thing, let you speak, sir, and, but Attorney Macy might better be able to speak to it, but the town of Waukesha here, there are state-imposed levy limits, okay? Those cannot be exceeded. The level of taxation, were it the will of the group or what or not, those cannot be exceeded without a referendum. And if you follow the news, their school district and communities are asking for referendums of their citizens' grade to exceed levy limits. We can't do that. So some of the rumors about people's taxes, and I see people shaking their heads, your taxes are gonna go through the roof and everything. The Town Board does not have the power to exceed the state-imposed levy limits. It's just that simple without a referendum, and I hope everybody would understand that before we come. There's a lot of important decisions to make about the prioritization of how to spend the money, and that's been a lot of tonight's discussion, is about prioritization, but to walk out of here that the Town Board is gonna raise your taxes through the roof, couldn't do it if we wanted to. State-imposed levy limits, that simple. Please.
Eugene Gnera, South 36, West 2658, Trail Genesee Road. The lady who first spoke tonight brought up the fact that the land purchase is in no way, shape, or form tied to the town becoming a village. I just wanna make that statement because I know a lot of people came in late, and I was glad to hear that. My top priority for the Board, and I believe the majority of the town residents' top priority is for us, the town, so we become a village. I think it's the best benefits of everybody. We're all in the same boat on that one. So my question is, does the budget include all monies, for example, lawyer fees, in case the city wants to bring us to court and there might be a long legal battle? Does the budget include all monies to help us become a village?
Oh, I think that's her question. We'll answer it now. Yes, it is costing us money in our effort to become a village. I'll explain that a little bit, but the whole thing is if we do not make that effort and we're not successful, and additional lands from the town are annexed into the city of Waukesha, the village of Big Bend, the city of New Berlin, or even the town of Brookfield if they were to incorporate, or the town of Vernon, and the town shrinks, our economic viability shrinks with it, it's death by a thousand cuts. I mean, we have, Kathy read through it, basically our total aggregate assessed value for the town, if we continue to lose land through annexation, that drops. It's death by a thousand cuts. Then, back to your question, the Town Board, and I think it was unanimous decisions of the Town Board, we have allocated, and correct me if I'm wrong, but $50,000 for engineering attorney and consultant's fees, and we did a second, put on that, if you will, am I not direct on that, at $50,000, basically as budget amendments to this year's budget. Those are big sums of money. We could continue that discussion, but that is about trying to fight for our future. What the total tab of that ends up being is a bit unknown, but I think the Board was unanimous in thinking that's a responsible thing to do, because we want to protect our town and the integrity of it.
Well, it's great to hear. Go fight.
Thank you.
So, I'm just trying to correct the amounts, looking at the budget. In 2019, the Board did a budget amendment and moved $100,000 into border protection, which is our incorporation work. In 2020, they put in an additional $30,000 in the 2020 budget for that purpose.
So, that means they, they already moved $100,000 out of the contingency fund into the budget this year to work on that project, the border security. If you reduce the levy and they don't buy the land, they would be able to replace that contingency back to the rate where it's at for those $100,000. Those are the kind of things you at least have to understand when making that decision, because they are separate decisions, reducing the levy versus buying the land. It's not that they're gonna squander the money if you give it to them. It's the same amount, it's only $19,000 and a few dollars more than last year's levy. It's not $300,000 more. So to strike it by $300,000, you at least gotta understand the ramifications of that, okay? I mean, that's the only part, we're trying to make sure you understand the facts.
Even one other quick thing, and you could correct me, and I know Supervisor Durr, I think you even made the motion, I believe, this, earlier this year in 2019, the Town Board moved, I believe, $450,000, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
From the operating fund, the capital fund. And you could, I guess, call that operating surplus. We, a bit left over from '18, but we also dug in a little bit deeper to the operating reserve. That was a decision that the Board made unanimously, and in some respects, at the end of the day, whether the money is in that capital fund or the operating fund doesn't make a huge amount of difference. It can be transferred. Part of that was because the town, with being... Part of that was because the town, with being penny-pinching, has been able to run in the black in the past, the reality of it with this year, with the hundred thousand dollars of budget amendment for the incorporation effort, I mean, that's gonna erode against the bottom line for 2019. It's simply that way. That was not an expense that we anticipated, or that anybody who was here anticipated last year, when the budget was put together in November. We didn't anticipate this incorporation opportunity, was not on the radar screen a year ago. That wasn't on the radar screen until early summer, something like that, thereabouts.
Spring.
Spring, late spring. So, that's a decision that the board has made, one that I certainly support, hopefully town residents support on that, it's costing us some money, but hopefully it'll pay dividends in the end, big time. Sorry, we wandered off a bit, but I think those are awfully good questions, and again, the theme of tonight is dissemination of information, that's what we need to do. Who else would like to speak about the proposed budgets?
I'll speak in favor of the budget, Mr. Chairman, and when I talk about speaking in favor of the budget, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty, uh, four hundred and forty-two dollars. And let me explain myself. A lot of the questions in the audience surround, how are we paying for the land? And if we don't buy the land, which I thoroughly support not buying the land, I will not support any capital budget that has any money in it for the purchase of land, should it pass the vote tonight. But the reality is, is that the plan to pay for the land came from many, many cuts of things that shouldn't have been cut, in my opinion. There were conversations about fire equipment that needed to be replaced, that we have been trying to get replaced since 2006, 2007, that was again moved down the line into 2022 and 2023. There were cuts made in road paving. I would have preferred to see the road paving in the capital budget set around three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand, and it was reduced to two hundred thousand. So when we're talking about how was the plan to purchase land paid for, in my opinion, it was paid for by neglecting other projects. And should the vote be, should the vote fail to pass to purchase the land tonight, which is how I will be voting, should it fail to purchase, I would support maintaining the tax levy, so that we can go back to funding the things that need to be funded. I would like to see an increase in the capital budget with the three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars, to increase road paving, and look at bringing some of our fire equipment replacement back into either 2021 or 2022, and we've, and to cycle some of our plow trucks. So, that's really how the land purchase was planned to be paid for, by pushing other projects down the road. So it would be my opinion, and it's the right of the electorate, and I will fix a budget for the money that you give me, and I will do it with a smile on my face. But it would be my plan to support a budget and a tax levy at six hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars, and my commitment to all of you, and I'm one vote, but I will push to put that money where I feel it belongs, which surrounds road paving, fire equipment replacement, and plow truck replacement.
Okay, who else would like to speak on the budget?
Ron Krieger, S-31, W-25080, Green Valley Drive, I'm on the island down here. First off, what's the threat of putting us in the city if that goes true? If our village status?
So, we, good afternoon.
Sure, go ahead.
So, in the incorporation, the, the statute that we're looking at using, that we're trying to use, allows us to keep all of the, all of our islands in the town. So you're all safe within the town, the city would not, you would not be pushed to the city, or the city would not be able to take you. If we incorporate under this statute, which sunsets June thirtieth, we can keep all of our town residents that we currently have in the, that's the rough thing we're just looking to do.
Okay, one other thing, whether it counts or not, why wasn't this big red Christmas ornament traded on a new plow truck? Sitting out in front.
At this point, we're trying to get a return on the, on our investment to put toward a new truck.
Why can't it be traded?
We're trying to get more than a trade-in value, so, so we're trying that first.
Just a, just a quick comment regarding the incorporation effort, if we're successful on that, we would be a village, which would include annexation into the city of Waukesha. The city cannot annex the property without the property owner's consent, but we're basically trying to lock, lock it up into a team, is it that simple? Yes, please.
John Divic, S-51, W-23115, Partridge Lane. A question about, excuse me, a question about the reserves. We heard at one point tonight about two point something million dollars in reserve, and now we've just heard about an operating reserve. So, how many reserves are there, and what's the total in the reserves?
Sure, I'll answer your question on that a bit, with regard to the operating fund, okay? We have had previous advice from financial people, from attorney, and that type of thing. I don't believe an attorney basically can speak to it, there's a hard and far, a hard and fast part of the statute, but there is a recommendation to us that many communities keep fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent of their annual operating budget in reserve. I mean, if we're twenty-five percent, it'd be three months' worth, right? If we're fifteen percent, it'd be more like two months' worth. The town, several years ago, adopted a reserve policy for the operating fund, to maintain it at not less than twenty-five percent, I believe, and I remember, we were at more than forty percent, which is really on the high end, but I just saw something in the towns' association newsletter just this past week, that they were suggesting some communities do it at ten percent. We were maintaining it at around forty percent for three, four years. This past year, the board reduced it, because we took four hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the capital fund, if you will, so we reduced it roughly to, say, thirty-two percent or something of our annual operating budget. At, at two, roughly two point six million dollars of annual operating budget, roughly forty percent of that was around a million dollars, we reduced that a bit. And the capital fund does have money in it, but if you look at the list, and Supervisor Dur spoke to that, some of us have different priorities. I think an absolute high priority for this town is to have sleeping quarters for the fire department, to improve our response times. We need a public works building on this property, or someplace, we have our, most of our equipment is outside, rusting away. We cannot preload trucks with salt to go out, I mean, it's gonna snow tomorrow, we can't preload those trucks, because we can't put them inside. We're running over to the highway department, correct, on Grandview, to get salt, because the county stores us. I believe we need a salt storage facility, so we don't have to go over there and wait to get loaded, it's inefficient. So there are a lot of capital needs, and there is a fund balance in that, of a couple million dollars, but the dream list, or the wish list that, for the next five years, purchasing the property or not, it's a, it's a big list, it's deeper than the pocketbook, so that's the purpose for it. Did that answer your question?
So, John, so the chairman mentioned the reserve, you had asked about the reserve, we only have one reserve, and that's for the general fund, to make sure we can make payroll and make our, our bills. But with all of the fund balance, we have fund in, in the operating fund, we have fund in the fire inspection fund, and then we also have fund balance in the capital fund. That comes to three million, seven, seventy-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, that's what you were asking.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
I will provide no slip. My name is Lori Longtime, W-271, S-3581, Oakdale Drive. That's my revolutionary act for the day. I just wanna speak quickly to the issue of village status, and a lot of people are, came out to this meeting tonight, they're concerned about how the town is spending our money, and they don't want their tax levies to go up. I don't want mine to go up either, but I just want to reiterate how important that village status is, and I support any costs in the budget that will move us toward that village status and protect our decisions, if, should the, the city of Waukesha decide to challenge that. It's really important to get to that one million, six hundred and seventy-five and change, that everybody in this room is paying their fair share, their tax levy. And what happens is, when people, you know, subdivisions, there's still open lands still in the town, and when developers buy up this land, they've got no one living there that says, hey, you know, I either wanna be in the city or I don't. The developers just, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a cash cow for them, because they get annexation to the city, and then they can charge more for their lots, they can put more lots closer to, more houses closer together, and, and then pass that on to the unsuspecting people that are going to buy those houses. So, that is another way that annexation can, can erode our tax base. And what will happen is, as our tax base erodes, we won't be able to provide the services that we have come to depend on, and, and it's going to, it spread this tax levy out over fewer people, and then everybody's gonna have to pay more, whether we like it or not. So, and I would urge you, please, if you're in this room and you're thinking about selling your property, be aware that, you know, the new people might feel differently about the town of Waukesha. If we had village status, that won't be an issue, they wouldn't be able to choose to annex to the city of Waukesha. The same thing with that man that lived in the island, he might, at some point, sell his house to somebody that, wow, I'd like to be in the city. And so we lose that, we lose that tax base too. And that's how, when we say erosion, it's a slow eating away of the tax base. So I would encourage everybody to think about your future as a town, and hopefully that you would be, everybody in this room is gonna be in strong support of seeking that village status, in order to protect our borders and our tax base legally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We perhaps wandered a bit away from the budget hearing, but to the extent that that is a huge component of the financial future of the town of Waukesha, I think it's okay to wander a bit. Who else would like to talk? Anybody else interested in speaking? All right, then, we'll call once again, any electors to speak in favor of the budget? Any electors wishing to speak in opposition to the budget? Any electors wishing to speak in rebuttal to any of the statements that have been made this evening? This is last chance. Okay, hearing...